We have six clocks, so I'll call it in order and we'll start with the pledge allegiance. Flag in the gym.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under one God.
Okay, first item, are persons wishing to address the school board or not on the agenda? Saying none, approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are, those of you who got the agenda late have the change, we need an additional personnel report and then we need an addition of the individual air quality expenditure.
Okay. That's all we need. I'll make a motion. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed name, motion passes. Next item is new business, first item in new business, personnel report.
And we just received the financial piece that goes with this, so we do have a resignation, you don't have anything in front of you because it just came to pass late this afternoon, but we have the resignation of Marissa Ochsheim for Kappa. And we have her included in this.
Okay, and we need a motion on all these individuals, correct?
Yeah, I put them each separate.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept the resignation of Marissa. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed name, motion passes. Next item, South Dakota High School Activities Association Resolution.
That's just an annual resolution that says that we want to be part of the activities of the state in South Dakota to allow us to play in any other sanctioned term access or thing.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the South Dakota High School Athletics Association Resolution. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed name, motion passes. Next item, Fall 2020 Return to Learn Plan.
Okay, there's two, if, I don't know if you guys in the back, if you got a handout or if you want, there are extras up here, if you want to look at the full document because I don't have the full document up on the screen, I just kind of have some talking points and I will refer you back to this often. There should be a great big draft on it and I ask that this doesn't really leave the room or go anywhere because this is, this is a draft still, after tonight, things will change, we will, we will be posting this out on the website, hopefully tomorrow, now keep in mind that both of our technology folks are out on some quarantine right now, so they're the ones who helped me get it on, I cannot post it on the website myself, so barring any, any, too many issues, we will get it posted for people and I can always just send it right there, but it probably won't be on the website quite as much as we wanted to. So, again, what you have in front of you is the draft, knowing that we have probably put, I don't know guys, what do you think?
What?
These two principals have worked their entire summer with me, they have not wavered, even on the days when I would have wavered from myself if I could have, especially last week, they kind of hung in there with me when we were, we were really starting to come to the wire and making some final decisions, so I'm going to have you follow along with me on both sheets, it will not necessarily go in order, this is for you to say, I understand and I agree, it's okay, anything in here that you don't agree with, I got some, received great suggestions this morning from Jackie, I was able to get some of them in there, some of them, they just need to talk a little bit more with the admin team, but anytime you bring something up on this, we can change it, this is not a static document, it's not a static document on the first day of school, it will continue to change, we know the governor is coming to South Dakota or to Sioux Falls tomorrow to talk a little bit about return to learn, I don't know what that's going to bring and how that could affect this, so everyone needs to be flexible, that's kind of our big word is flexibility, there's a month before kids come in, a month ago this plan would have looked different, it is going to look different, we also can't just, we're trying very hard not to make changes too quickly, there's, there's lots of things that sound good, other people's plans look good, we chased that rabbit hole many times of, wow, look at this, this is good, but ultimately we feel this is the best start to our plan here at Del Rabbit, so those guiding principles, I think these are important because sometimes people say, or been read certain things and go, why is that in there, why was that not in there, and so those guiding principles, the first one is that we really want the onsite learning environment and you're going to see that even in the hybrid situation, we are trying to keep as many kids onsite as we can, that's an example of, we went into the, one of the second or third full group return to learn committee meetings and I think in my head and the administrators said, we thought hybrid, we're going to limit capacity, we will for sure have to go to half the kids here and half the kids gone no matter what, and I believe it was Lee that really said, hold on, think about this, can we utilize other areas, and the more we looked into it, yes, that's, that's what we can do, so again, anytime we can keep as many kids onsite, even if it means being that they are staying stationary, that they are utilizing additional workspaces, that's what we're going to do, especially in the elementary and middle school, the other one is that no one control staff strategy alone can limit the transmission of this disease and we have a variety of initiation strategies, that's where I really want the people listening at home, the people that read the plan, who agree with some of the things we have in there or disagree with some of the things in there to realize we have a multiple, we have a variety of strategies, so if you're not, if you don't believe in one of them, that, that's okay, we believe that if we get enough things in, small things, big things all together, that all of those things will help us try to keep kids in school and so we just really hope that people know, we maybe understand that some of these have a little bit higher rate of being able to assist us in certain areas, but together, they might all help, kind of like our safety plan, no one thing does it alone, the third one is, and we really, we really saw this this spring, there's been a lot of research out, Wisconsin had a great study on curricular, extracurricular and co-curricular experience are vitally informed the wellbeing of our kids, we did not want to create a plan that just got kids back here sitting in a classroom for eight hours a day, we want to make sure we can figure out a way to get them into their arts, to get them into their music, to get them into their after-school programs, because that is part of what the school, the kids want, that's their, their perspective of schools, not just the classroom and we want to make sure we're keeping that full exposure, face-to-face interactions, this one's important, this one we, we got feedback on, we had teachers who killed it in face-to-face interactions in the spring when we went virtually and we had some that didn't necessarily, but what we do know from our survey data, from kids, from parents, is that those teachers who really embedded a face-to-face interaction, whether it be virtually or in person, they helped kids in social emotional piece of that virtual learning, it helped them a lot, it helped them stay more positive, so regardless if we're face-to-face or virtual, every classroom will have a face-to-face interaction component, which is why we spent money on swivels and we're going to have more staff development to make sure everybody knows how to embed those things, and then the last one, all family, students and staff must understand and follow the protocols and expectations outlined in this document, nowhere in there, again, does it say agree with, because we go back to number two, you might not agree with everyone and everyone might not be exactly what you do personally, but as administrators, we took our personal opinions out and we decided on the best practices that we think are good for our kids and staff. So, what we have first in the document, the first page of the document is page three in yours, but I really want to start out talking about that, the learning, the different instructional models we have, we've talked about this a lot, we went talking about this on Big Sioux Media for, for a couple months even, but we have the four, we have green, whenever people see green and they see that level one, we joking as administrators say, that's 2019, probably, it could never come back, we don't know, so and we weren't going to spend tons of time defining what level one our old normal looks like, we all know what 2019 looked like pre-COVID, we'd give anything to be back there, but we might not, so if we ever get to a level one in some of these, that's, that's wonderful, but we all know what that looks like, where the district is coming in and what we have spent the most time preparing for in this document is level two, which is traditional learning with parallel instruction, that is when we expect, we hope to have the majority of kids onsite, so again, that's our Fall 2020 reentry level for all buildings, parallel instruction is simply that if I am a student who is not able to attend onsite learning, I get my instruction virtually at the same time with some of the same, the majority of the same expectations as my peers who are in school, now we want to be really clear on this, if as a parent I choose this, this is not something the district will mandate, if we go to hybrid or if we go to virtual, the district says, your child cannot come to the, their physical learning environment, in this situation, a parent chooses it and a little bit more of the responsibility falls onto the parent then in this situation, now we still have the swivels and we still have virtual learning platforms, but it's not going to be the same as if we go into a virtual learning environment, we also, the, this is, not everything is in the document, that's one thing I want to stress also, each building principal has created their own plan according to my expectations that are in this and then what works for them, so if you can imagine, not only did they help me create the district one, they each have their own plan that talks about the needs of their staff, the needs of their students, you don't have your hands on that, because honestly, that's a building level guide from what we approved in this, but they have then set up that PV, the student expectations for attendance, for check-in, you know, this spring, what I really want to stress for parents is if you sign up for parallel instruction for your child, if you're at the middle school or high school level, you will be doing it synchronous with the classroom teacher, so your child will be expected to gain that attendance by, by checking in and having the instruction done at the same time of others, we know there's extenuating circumstances, however, that's our expectation, the kindergarten level or the elementary level is a little bit different because we know that students aren't able to do that on their own, it's really up to the parents to be home, so then we will have specific guidelines, specific checklists and tasks for kids to complete and it will need to be done in order for them to gain attendance that day, it will be much more rigorous than it was in the spring, I really want to stress that, if a parent determines that they, their child is medically fragile or they are not comfortable under, with our expectations of protocols, to send their child, we want them to notify the building principal by August 10th, now, we've, we've struggled with this, this question, the next piece of this is if you, if you select parallel instruction or if you select onsite instruction, how long are you doing that for, most schools in our area are doing it for a, you're committing to a semester at a time, we are saying that we expect you to be committing for a long-term one semester, however, we also know that there are extenuating circumstances, we also know that maybe as a parent, you put your child in a setting that you think is best for them and then you visit with the principal and say, for these reasons, I made the wrong choice, and we always want children to come back to the school, we really do, so in that situation, we are going to allow a one-time waiver, we kind of call it, where a parent would be able to come in that first semester and say, maybe we made the wrong choice, or it's very possible that suddenly someone in the family is more, more medically prone to not being able to have the child come into an environment like a school and then come home, so there are circumstances, but we want people to really think this through because we are not going to allow them to go back and forth. I'm not sure if you have any questions, everything is really laid out here for you on level two, but that is our reentry position, just yell at me if you do, now hybrid instruction, that's our level three and that is when we have to limit capacity, and again, everything that we are seeing coming from the CDC, coming from the Department of Health and DOE is saying that if they were to limit capacity for us, it would be room-specific, we didn't necessarily know that when we started planning, but that's good news for our middle school and our elementary, who want to keep kids right here in the buildings, so, here's an example, they are going to say you cannot have more than 15 kids in a room of a certain dimension, while what we are hoping to do then, so that we don't send elementary and middle school kids home every other day or something, sometime or location to do virtual instruction again, we are going to utilize spaces like what we're in, the cafeteria, the lunchroom, the gymnasium, in that time, it does become a bit more of a, of a static type instruction where kids aren't moving much, teachers are, however, it keeps them in the, in our building and it keeps them, keeps them here, the middle school and the elementary are both planning, even if we go to hybrid, to do something like that, now, that's not to say if they suddenly say we have to limit capacity in buildings, that we wouldn't have to do something different, but that is our intent right now, at the high school level, he's looking at initiating more of an A-B schedule. You and your packet had level four, we know what level four looks like, again, that, that was very similar to what we did in the spring, I did not put it up on the PowerPoint, but if you have questions, again, how that looks will be more rigorous, there will be student attendance expectations, there will be academic integrity expectations, because we really want to make sure that pieces in if we were to go to virtual, our hope is that we don't have to get there. Any questions on the instruction piece? Okay, here we are, and this, this gets a little bit all over the place, so you just got to bear with me on, not everything on here lines up perfectly in here, but the next one was that health, under health protocols, some of the things I highlighted on the PowerPoint are what I think people want to know about, if I'm a mom at home, if I'm a teacher, they're saying, okay, are we screening, are we screening at school, are we taking temperatures, well, right now in the yellow, in the, in the level two, we are doing what we call passive screening, which is parents at home, we, they, we will be studying home that checklist and they will be doing passive screening, screening at home, if you figure we have nine routes, it would take us a long time to screen all those kids on getting onto the bus, we also know that temperature screening in, in the environment outdoors isn't always reliable, nor do we know what to do necessarily with children when they get to a bus stop and they have a temperature, earlier this summer, before we did our return to sports and activities, Sanford, the Sanford Health Partners we had, they threw out the number of about 60% only had temperatures, so temperatures at the beginning of this was a really big, really big peak, so we were telling everyone, now, it's just, it's come down as one of those things, so that in level two, we will only be doing passive screening, level, if we were to go to a hybrid where, which would mean our exposure, our infection rate is up in the community, we think we would probably go to active screening at that point, which at buildings where we're not limiting capacity is going to take a little bit and we're going to need assistance from teachers and staff and that sort of thing, because we can have kids come in, exposed kids and then take their temperature, we do not have that protocol completely figured out yet, what it would look like, but we do feel like we have to go to more active screening if we go to a hybrid. We have ordered an abundance of hand sanitizers, we have, we will have them in every classroom, we will have them in high-traffic areas, entrances, that sort of thing, we are going to get them put on every school bus so that the kids do the hand sanitizer as soon as they get in, the next one is improving indoor air quality and this is something new that I've spent some time over the last two weeks really researching and looking into, this is a proposal that you have for the next agenda item, I've talked to some of you about this, but we have unmanageable areas and some of, some of those unmanageable areas are really, they're key to getting kids here, they're key to keeping some of our most vulnerable employees stacked and, and I think that if we can figure out a way to improve that indoor quality, I can't say it's going to completely eliminate risk, but the systems that I'm asking you to consider purchasing with, I'm hoping we can, we use up, we've, we've used a lot of our CARES money, but there's also GEAR money applications that I would, I would apply for, it was supposed to be at the end of June, but it's, it's still coming, but if you remember last board meeting, I said that I had looked at putting those systems, the ionization system into all of our HPC, all of our air handling units and that was going to be about 250,000, well, we just didn't feel comfortable doing that, so what I've gravitated to is those unmanageable areas, so if I could put in these polar ionizations, they're, they're two different ones, I want to put them, I want to put the actual filters in each one of the buses, because if you consider buses, that is, that is everything that is, if you consider unmanageable that we can get, kids are sitting in close proximity, we know that proper social distancing is, is considered less than six feet, there's some we go room with three to six, but that 15 minutes, six feet, we just can't get away from that in buses, even when we staggered students a little bit, so I would like to put one of those units in every bus and help filter that air, basically in the bus, what you're doing then is shooting out that ionization and you're just killing viruses and bacteria, is it foolproof, probably not, is it something that I feel pretty strongly in, each device is only about $1,100 and we do, like I said, have that CARES money, the great thing about those devices is during the day or when we get past this, we will put them in additional places, we, they're not like some of our equipment that we're purchasing that we might not have a use for, these, we can always find bathrooms, locker rooms, more in our music rooms, weight rooms, we can just fill up our areas of, you know that sometimes with kids, they, the, the bacteria, if you consider wrestling rooms, that's one of the areas I'm putting a bigger unit in, because we will use those even after we get past this, this pandemic, so that's what the quote is for, six of them on that quote, six, about, about $8,000 of it would be for cavemen and they will pay for those, they feel pretty strongly about getting them in their classrooms, but we want to have choir and we want to have vocal music and I want to have music over here at the elementary and, and so what I'm finding is these, these ionization systems are another level of protection in those areas. Contact tracing, I think tracking or tracing, what did I say, tracing, but this is something, you know, we, we have to do, we have to, we have to do this with any kid who's been, student or staff who's been exposed, who's been considered close contact, who has been diagnosed with COVID, we will need to put this job duty on someone, I, I know that's kind of an elementary looking picture, but it's, it's exactly, it's just, and if you consider we could get to the point where we have a class, a whole classroom of students who were considered exposed, there's no one on staff right now that can work on tracking that, make sure that we're checking in for symptoms, make sure we know that they've gotten a doctor's note, that they've come back, that the Department of Health has contacted them, so we will be hiring someone for that, appendix A in your document shows, the Department of Health, I will say, has given us a lot of good data, information, the last couple really. in the last couple, really coming in the last two weeks. But we're not going to reinvent the wheel. Everything that I have in the back here is from the Department of Health or CDC. I don't feel comfortable creating any of this on my own. I'm not a healthcare worker, not been trained in it, but they have. And so all of the checklist, all of the documents are straight from CDC and the Department of Health. So we will, we want to get some of this in the hands of parents because even after all this, when I had an employee call once and say, I did, this is what's going on, what do I do? I thought, I have 33-page document. I don't even know what to tell him. But these flow charts are very specific, and they really do help. So that is what we will always refer back to. Masks and protection. I put this in before school operations. I believe school operations is important to discuss when you figure out masks and protections, but I wanted to just get to it because we do reference it when we get to the protection piece. So masks is more towards the back of your document. We will move it once we get everything figured out. But page 17 of your document. Again, this is changed. You can't see it very well, but on the bottom of my PowerPoint screen, I put down three references that I think are really important that helped us get to this recommendation today. And all of them have been updated very recently. The oldest one is American Academy of Pediatrics, and their update was June 25th. And that one was just saying what ages. That one just kind of pointed out that sometimes there's more harm than good for our younger students. But the other two, the CDC guidance for schools, came out on the 23rd of July. And the South Dakota State Medical Association is encouraging all schools in South Dakota to wear masks. That recommendation came out on July 21st. And that's where I say that all of this is so involving. I don't know if a month ago, I might have gone with the right of these first two statements. You can see I left them both in because I feel like this is something that I want your, I want you to be a part of making that decision. Like I said, a month ago, I think I would have said masks are recommended, highly recommended. I have passed that on now to masks are required for all staff and students in both Level 2 and Level 3. Now, the caveat of that is, we do, in some of those documents, especially the Academy of Pediatrics, and even, I don't remember the page number, but Julie and I were looking at it today in the CDC guideline, guidance. It also says that for our younger elementary students, it is more difficult to keep them on. Therefore, there's not as much recommendation for that. So we are pushing for students in grades, recommending for students in grades 1 through 12, that you require them for all staff and students. Now, staff in those grades would still wear them. Again, that's changed based on people who are a lot smarter than I am. There will be people who listen and go, oh, my kid doesn't need to wear a mask, they're not going to wear a mask. The court system is saying that we can make that requirement. We can enforce it. What we really want, more than anything, is we want to work on now, if we go through with required, we want almost a campaign. We want to be able to say to students, we're wearing masks. This is something to argue about. We hope this is short-term. What I want, what you're going to see in the next part, the operations part, is kids are not going to be wearing masks for eight hours a day. They are only going to be wearing masks when we cannot properly social distance. So we have things coming in school operations where anybody right now going, oh, my gosh, are kids going to wear a mask for eight hours? They aren't, not even close. But going back to those priorities, if we want a roundhouse education, I can't have a kid sitting in a desk for eight hours. I want them to go to art. If they go to art, they're standing around tables. They need a mask. We might, we still have computer labs. We have had commons. We have times where it is hard to keep them separated from another person for 15 minutes. They need the mask. However, we are also purchasing shields for all students in grades 7 through 8th grade. They have a mobile shield. When they're sitting at their desk, number one, they will be socially distanced in between that three and six feet. Two, they will each have their own shield that protects them from sharing their germs as much as we can around them. It's just a, it's just a shield, and they can hold that with them. In that situation, when they're sitting there, the mask isn't on. And they spend a lot of time at their desks. They really do. But then they also have the shield that if they go up to a small center, if their teacher feels comfortable. Some teachers will have plexiglass at those tables. Some teachers will say, bring your shields. Some teachers will say, we're kind of close here. Let's get the masks on. But students, for the most part, when they're sitting in a general classroom will not have their masks on. We're considering it more of a mask on the booth. We are spending Jeff DeBorg and also purchasing plexiglass shields. For example, if you consider our long tables in the elementary lunchroom, we either can have to really stagger lunchroom times and have every kid sit the same way, or we can put plexiglass up along the middle, and then they can look, they can be facing both ways. So we're doing that. Lots of different areas will have the plexiglass. We did just find plexiglass for a little bit more protection behind bus drivers today, too. So I think between those two things, when people hear masks, they need to not just hear, my child is wearing a mask all day. They need to hear, my child is wearing a mask only when we are unable to properly social distance and we can't necessarily prevent that exposure in a close contact situation. And you, board members, it came to Matt. You all have the letter that just came out on July 21st from the South Dakota State Medical Association, or hoping that schools would do this. I will say that the Board of Regents has now said that all public university students in South Dakota will be wearing masks. That being said, I'm going to quit talking for a minute. I know you're like, yes. And we are going to briefly talk a little bit about school operations and food service. And what I've asked the principals to do is give, we know the basics now. We know that, we know some of those specific things. We're not going to talk about everything tonight as far as entrances. We've established different entrances, that sort of thing. What I want the principals to talk about is some of those main, those main things. Like, what is your plan for staggering students in coming to school or in the hallway? The food service piece. And when they are the same, they're not going to repeat it. We don't want to just really drag this out. But Julie, your group is kind of a unique group. We'll start with you. And again, there are plenty of things in her plan that we have not put on the May plan, but they're administrative level. I would also like you, we are also going to talk just a little bit. I had them each prepare some statements about the kids that, how many kids, they just kind of assumed or estimated percentage of kids who were not fully engaged last spring and what their plans are for reentry for both wellness, emotional needs, and academic needs. So, all right. Do my camera appear?
No, I don't mind at all.
Or do you want her to stay there, Matt?
I can move the camera, either way.
Okay.
I'll stand.
Okay.
So I'll go through our food service first. That's on page 9. And at the elementary, we know that we're going to have to lengthen our time for lunch. We plan to utilize lunchroom space and classroom space for eating lunches. One of the big things that we talked about is, if you've ever eaten lunch at the elementary, I mean, when you walk in, the kids grab their own milk or silverware, their trays. And so everything will be behind the counter, and all of that will be put on their tray for them. They'll have a choice of white or chocolate milk. They'll have a choice of a hot entree. And then they will be given their prepared tray. We won't have the salad bar. And so that's just kind of, because we know that lunch is going to take a little longer and limits the time the kids are in the line because they're not making those choices. They're not self-serving. And so, and we also know that it kind of makes that small room with the kitchen, the kids can travel through there quicker. Tray returns will be set up around the lunchroom for those that are eating in the lunchroom so that they don't have to go into the small tray return room to return their trays. And as Summer said, we'll have plexiglass on the tables. And so we know that we're going to space kids apart. But I also recognize the fact that lunch is a social time. And so having the plexiglass just does give us the opportunity to have some facing. As we develop our lunch schedule, I anticipate that we'll be able to see one whole grade level in the lunchroom, and we'll stagger that schedule among the week. So all kids have the opportunity to be in the lunchroom throughout the week, but not on the same day. Looking at school. Oh, and then for Level 3, we would all eat in lunchrooms, in the classrooms, not the lunchroom. So it would be more restrictive at Level 3 when we become more static. And we'd be less, we would be in our classrooms for our meals. Questions? As far as our school operations, just to highlight some of the things that we have talked about in our planning. I think one of the biggest takeaways that we have had is how we're going to cohort students, and we're going to keep students in groups throughout the day. When I spoke with my elementary teachers, I want the day to look as normal as it can for my elementary kids, knowing that it really is going to be very different. But I want them to be able to go, as Summer said, to art, to music, to gym in a safe way, that's safe for my kids and it's safe for my teachers. So at Level 2, our largest cohort is a grade level. A grade level will never mix with another grade level. And then within that large cohort, we have smaller cohorts of classrooms. And then even within the classrooms, we look at cohorting kids within that classroom. So if there's a classroom of 20, perhaps there's a group of 10 that always is together. They always sit in the same two rows that are spaced apart. And when they eat at lunch, their assigned seating is always together. We just want to always look at keeping kids together into cohorts. So our largest cohort at Level 2 will be a grade level. Classroom seating, Summer touched on that. How we'll have our desk shields and space our kids apart as close to six feet as possible. We do have lockers. We will restrict the use of lockers to half a classroom at a time at every other locker so they are distanced apart. Recession, we'll continue to have recess. I think that's a really important part of our day here at the elementary, just to get that movement. At Level 2, it will be restricted to grade-level recess. And then at Level 3, it would be restricted to classroom-level recess. So that classrooms would never mix with other classrooms at Level 3. Our entrances, obviously, will have assigned entrances for different grade levels. We know that if you're being picked up or dropped off during the day, that we would have parents call the office, and we would either go out and pick up the student or we would bring them out to the parents'. Office access, we would limit our office occupancy and just ask parents that they aren't in our office unless absolutely necessary. We know that our offices get a lot of traffic, and if we could decrease that traffic, I think that would just help for the safety of our office staff. Hallways, we'll look at stagger schedules. We don't really have a one-way traffic loop here at the elementary, but we'll stay on the right side. We'll always travel so that we are on the right side of the hallway in our two-way traffic. Much of the same is for Level 3, with the exception that we're just more static in our movement and that we utilize more space in our elementary. Questions? Operations?
I do have one question.
Yep.
So when we are using the combination of lunchroom and classroom space for lunchtime, who is going to be on lunch duty in the classroom? Is it the teacher the whole time? Do they get a chance to have a break or what?
That schedule hasn't been developed yet, but we do have a lot of staff that we utilize over that noon hour for recess and lunch duty staff. So I told my teachers, I want to do as best as I can to have a schedule that allows them that they're not sitting there eating their lunch with those kids in the classroom every day.
I do have one more question.
Yep, go ahead.
So at recess time, are we, because it's outside, are we still going to do the requirement of the masks at recess?
Masks at recess, I guess, was not something that we had talked about. And the outside factor is, you know, kind of what we had hoped for. I do think when kids are in, some kids are in rigorous activities out there, and I would just want to assure that it's safe for them to be in rigorous activity while still having a mask on them. And so I guess we had really... We'll put that in.
What's your longest recess period?
Our longest recess is 15 minutes.
We're right at the close part.
Yeah. 15 to 20, I will say.
So we could adjust that.
Yep. Anyone? No? Okay. I just wanted such a little bit on our virtual learning that we had last spring. We really did have pretty good engagement with our students. I would say we were at 92% to 95% student engagement in our core academic subjects here at the elementary. We had high participation rates, but some of our classrooms had two different levels of, or two different types of platforms. And so we maybe had a student that performed on one platform but not the other, but we still counted that as student engagement. One of the challenges that we saw last spring for us was the lack of a virtual, like, live game with our teachers and students. What we struggled with at the elementary, we weren't able to use Zoom, and we were struggling to use Microsoft Teams. It was an honest struggle that we had. And so we know that that face-to-face virtual meeting is going to be one of our goals in that virtual online learning. Some other goals that, and changes that I have for us at the elementary, should we be in a virtual type of learning, is that we know we have to increase our paper-to-pencil activities. We didn't have a lot of that, and we focused so much on virtual, but we also know that studies show that the act of handwriting is so important in your literacy development. And so we are going to have to include that paper-to-pencil handwriting component in our students that are running off-site. I mentioned that we'll have to increase our virtual meeting opportunities, just that consistent and increased visual presence of our teachers in front of the camera, and then just clearly communicating our expectations for online learning for teachers, students, and families. And that came from staff surveys and from parent surveys. As far as when our kids come back and their academic and social emotional wellness, we did a needs assessment with our elementary last spring where we collected as much data as we could for every student, whether it was their grades or their last benchmark assessment. And we created documents so that we have assessment data as best we can for every student. And we created documents so that we have assessment data as best we can for every student. We will benchmark kids when they come in a variety of different ways, whether it's our STAR test or DIBL screening, classroom assessments. And that is how we will kind of benchmark where our students are at at the start of the school year. As far as their, their social emotional wellness, I think it's really important that just being here is going to be a benefit to their social emotional well-being. But we have a system in place to help identify students that might be anxious or having some emotional struggles that we need to identify and we'll use our counselor to help in that emotional component in identifying those students through our classroom teachers. We are also going to, I'm going to look this up here. I have it here on page twenty. I also think that just communication and that open communication and putting people at ease because you're communicating what's happening has the effect of calming the anxiety of our families. And so I do think communicating with our families prior to and after the start of school will be really important. Our revised open house schedule will allow students and families to have some one-to-one time with their teacher. And one of the things that we talked a lot about is making connections with our families very early on. And so having that opportunity to meet one-on-one at the beginning of the year, I think, will not only help start a solid relationship, but will also just ease some anxiety of how the school year is starting.
Who's got a chat?
Excuse me? Well, a lot of the things that Julie went through as far as food service, we're going to be using similar methodology. In the morning, we will have the grab-and-go breakfast as an option that will be eaten in classrooms, hand-washing prior to lunch. The, we're gonna have, are gonna have one class. Typically, we have our fifth and sixth ready at the same time. That one will be one, one or the other. Right now, our capacity with the dividers that we had planned is going to be about a hundred and forty people maximum for lunch. So we really can't have two groups. Much of the same with the selection for lunch. There'll be a single co or hot meal option. Everything will be put on a tray. It'll be grab-and-go. There is a, is a, is a, an extra that a student wants to purchase. It needs to be purchased at that time so we don't have anybody coming back into a line to mess with our, really flow. Again, assigned seating will be utilized with the young kids are in our, our lunchrooms. Again, designed to keep cohorts together. Groups of kids are going to be at the same table. It's so that we can, again, keep manageable groups in, in, have a sense that something bad doesn't. Really, that's all I've got for food service. Again, it's a lot of the same things that Julie, Julie not given. Questions on that? School operations, we're gonna be doing a lot of the same things that, I mean, with the, with, there not being a heck of a lot of difference in our ages. All of our four entrances will be utilized at middle school. Our south entrance will be fifth grade only. And I realize that we're gonna have some kids walking around school, but that's where we're gonna enter. There'll be sanitizer and then they'll bug them into a classroom. Sixth grade will have southeast entrance. Seventh grade will have the northeast entrance. And the north entrance to our commons will be eighth grade only. Again, with sanitizer as, as they come in. With the cohorts, again, we're gonna keep groups of students together. And in classes, we're gonna keep groups of students within classrooms together also. So I guess you could call us sub-cohorts. We're gonna be getting our distances as far, as far away, or as close to six feet apart as possible with realization that some of our desks, I'm gonna say desks in quotes, aren't desks, they're tables, they're six, they're six feet tables. And that's why we went with the shields so that we can really create a perimeter on those tables. We're also gonna be putting some plexiglass in our art room where we've got bigger tables and they can face each other, but again, with art, things are just a little bit more spread out. This allows them a little bit more room. Lockers, we're gonna be arranging lockers in classrooms. So typically, we go by, I'll bet, and then we've gone every other. We're gonna have fifth grade Hager in a section, fifth grade Eggers in another section, just to, just to keep kids away from each other. As far as going to classrooms, right now, with the addition of the classrooms, our fifth grades, all of our, all of our grades can really manage, can really back up one class, one, one class and everybody can move over or move one classroom down and not create a heck of a lot of face-to-face traffic. I've also, I'm gonna be allowing backpacks also this year, so kids aren't having to go to their lockers all the time. We haven't before. Recession, again, we're gonna have grade level cohorts. This is, this is how we've done it, really, since I've been there, since I've been here, is our fifth grade goes out together. I, I mean, I don't see them in masks. Our recesses are typically ten to twelve minutes. Recession is held inside, though. We're gonna have to keep kids in the classroom. Putting them all in the gym. We might be using that space for someone else. As far as dropping kids off and picking kids up, again, we ask parents to give a call and then we'll send kids out with visual confirmation. Our office occupancy is gonna be five, excuse me, four, not counting me, nurse secretary. Media center, we're gonna still be allowing kids to use the media center, but it's, it's gonna be by appointment only. And really, what I want to do is, is sixth grade's gonna be using it one day and that's it. So we can clean it out. Fifth grade's gonna be using it another day and just have it rotate that way. Really, that's, it starts keeping cohorts, it's the only way that I can think of, of being able to, to figure out still use the space. And still, we have to be able to social distance when in there. So we're not gonna be able to have a total class go to the, go to the media center. It's, it's just not gonna be able to happen. Staggered schedules, something that we're gonna be, you know, exchanging or really experimenting and collaborating with when, when I get staff in, just on the best way to work our traffic flow. Because right now, we've got some situations where honestly, we've got traffic flow that I can only imagine because we've got new classrooms and new areas. At any rate, that's what I've got for, really, the school operation. If we would go to Level Three, what I envision right now, what I plan right now is we would add a, an additional section to each grade level. And those additional sections would, would be supervised by some of our associates and our current instruction would be rotating and our teachers would be rotating. That would mean our eighth grade would be in five sessions. All the others would be in four. We would, we would most likely use, well, either gym space or possibly the media center as a, as a fourth classroom or a fifth classroom, additional one. In doing that, we can, you know, with special ed going in and out, I can get kids down to about sixteen, seventeen per classroom, which is, you know, when we're, when we're coming back in, we're gonna have, twenty-six is probably our biggest option, down to twenty-two. So. Questions on our tier three? I also envision our encore moving and going to individual classrooms, just like teachers are, just like classrooms are, if that occurs. In the spring of 2020, just some numbers for you. Each grade, we had, right, between four and seven students that struggled to stay engaged in virtual learning. And, you know, we met every, every week as a grade level and the conversations typically revolved around those four to seven kiddos, a lot of some procedural things. But how can we get them to work? How can we get things going with them? It ended up with probably sixty percent or ten percent of our students. As, we ran our ICU list throughout the spring and those notifications kept on going up to parents. As things ended up, as the, as the year ended, those assignments came in, there was more of a heightened, I guess, urgency, sense of urgency. And there were some things that didn't work as well or just, you know, some student performance based things like playing instruments or singing. It was just a little bit more of a hesitancy for kids to record themselves. As far as what I've got planned or what we've got planned for middle school, we're gonna be utilizing the twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth for that, really, orientation. We're gonna be announcing to our, our families who their, their first period teacher is. And some people say it's a homeroom and they think that kiddos are in that room a heck of a lot more than they're, than they are. Really, it might be ten, fifteen minutes in, in some cases. But we're gonna be releasing those and we're gonna be having families, really, set dates, kind of like a pair of teacher papers, so that we can go through the different formats, different, like our Google Classroom and all the, the ways we get codes to kiddos. All the different programs, at least going through and letting, letting parents and students see it. Our fifth grade, I'm getting a couple emails and I saw a couple things just sitting here on Facebook about parents wanting to know how their fifth grader is gonna end. We can have these scheduled, we're gonna be doing things individually for you. But those will be coming out shortly as far as the contact and setting up those appointments to come in. Let's see. We, again, like, like the elementary, we're gonna be assessing kids at the end of last year. We did give STAR assessments for reading and for math to, the vast majority of our students, and we're talking ninety-eight percent of our students got something done for those STAR assessments. So we have a pretty good idea on where most kids kind of ended up. We're gonna be, again, testing them, just like we do every, every, every year, to see where they're at and assess what we need to do educationally for them. Socially, emotionally, one of the things that, that really worked for our building, Sarah Holmberg had kids, had, had, most students, in some cases, it was their check-in for the day, as they were answering the questionnaire, really self-assessing their, their emotional state, just to see if, and, and students were able to actually assess someone and identify maybe another student that could use a touch, could use some, a contact. And that worked very well for the situation. I know all the school counselors have collaborated and they're, they're gonna be getting data and surveys from the parents and, and students, identifying the needs that, and assistance assimilated back to, back to school. And a lot of the same things with, with the swivel, utilizing swivel and kind of a, a rotating, I've got two swivels for each grade level and one swivel for each special ed teacher so that we can have synchronous instruction take place. Those two per grade level, they're gonna rotate. We're gonna start one in a classroom and one's gonna be in the next classroom. So as students go, we're, yeah, first period and we'll have second period. And that machine that wasn't first period will go to their next period. So it's just gonna be rotated. The encore is a bit more of a, a challenge. I've seen those folks using head puzzles, precastify more in, in some of the situations that we were in, again, last, last spring. We are gonna be using Zoom in, in conjunction with the swivels to have a safe portion of the lesson and then more of an open portion of the lesson where, you know, the save is for the instruction, it's for learning targets, it's for practice, it's for all the things that, that it's desperate, if, if a kid wants to go back and watch again, we're gonna, we're gonna look to, really, record those. After that, it's, we're gonna stop recording and we're gonna have a kid in the classroom and hopefully be able to ask the teacher live a question that he should ask. All right, I think, I know about it and whatnot. Any questions? Great, thanks.
I'm usually long-winded, but I'll try to be shorter. Some similarities between middle school, elementary, and high school, but there's obviously gonna be some pretty big differences as well. So as we get into the food service, not a ton of difference. We already have a stay-at-lunch because of our advisory period. So we have our juniors and our seniors go to lunch before our freshmen and our sophomores do. By the time they're usually finishing up, our freshmen and sophomores are usually kind of cycling in and they're kind of cycling out. So I don't think capacity-wise we'll have a problem, especially with our new commons area that we'll have up in high school, we'll be able to put some additional people in seats there. So I don't think we'll have a problem with the, with four in a table, using the same tables that, that Brandon's using there with plexiglass. We should have no problem with getting them into the lunchroom and having that dish because everybody has, kind of, has time to eat. So they will enter through the gym. They used to kind of come down what I would call Mr. Jorgensen's hallway, which will now be a middle school wing. So to keep them out of that hallway and just kind of away from the middle school and the middle school classrooms, they will enter the cafeteria or the commons area through the gym and they'll enter through the gym as well. That'll be their only, their only way to get in and out of the commons instead of using the hallways that walk past the middle school office and the hallway that walks past the new middle school rooms. They will not use those. So as far as options go, they'll have a couple more options that they can pick for lunch. They get a kind of a grab-and-go sandwich, hot sandwich option that they'll have every day too. But it'll look very similar to the middle school where extras will be given the first time through the line if they sort of can't come back to the servery. You know, just things like that, try to keep them distanced as much as we can, trays, silverware, all those things behind the counter, ready for them so they're not grabbing into the same utensils and touching those. So as much as we can do there during the lunchtime, again, staggering that. But we'd go to a Level Three, we would eat in classrooms. They have advisory classroom, but it's about sixteen, seventeen kids, roughly right in there. Seniors have an open lunch field, so we'd probably allow them to still do that. If we went to a Level Three, we'd probably have reduced student capacity, which I'll talk about a little bit too, which would give us more room, I guess, in the school building to eat. We'd probably go to a fifty percent capacity if we were at Level Three. So again, I'll talk about that a little bit when we get into the school operations piece. But otherwise, lunch is just kind of distancing as most that we can, but there are already staggered lunches. School operations piece is where it gets a little bit different than the middle school and the elementary schools. Specifically, the biggest one is cohorting because we can't at the high school. I don't know if we have one of our two-hundred-and-eighty kids that has the same schedule, I should say, two of our kids that have the same schedule. They might have the same biology class as sophomore, but they might have a different math class, they, all their electives could be different, they might have one or two of them the same. There's just no way to have a teacher stay and have kids rotate to him because we just don't have those commonalities of what those kids are taking in their schedules. So we are gonna have in the classroom up to twenty-seven, twenty-eight kids in a classroom, distancing as much as they can. But that may be where, you know, we talked about the mask having to be worn. They're just in a close contact for an hour and a half at times and there's just no possible way to distance them anymore than that. And so those are times we just have to kind of probably say, you're gonna be... The desk shields, we didn't go to at the high school, a couple of different reasons. Being bigger in high school students, they sit three feet above a desk, so those shields would have to be quite large just to probably cover some of our, our students that are six foot five that are sitting at a desk. You can see it right over the top of some of those shorter ones. They've already got a Chromebook, maybe a textbook, something on their desk. They already say they don't have enough room on their desk to even write or do anything. So we didn't do those at the high school, other than the fact that they're moving to classrooms sometimes six times a day onto a different, into a different place and having to move those with them. So we, we didn't go for that. So that's the biggest piece of the high school that is different. It's just the cohorting. We can't keep a group of kids together at all times during the day and that's just gonna be the reality of it. So going into it knowing that we're gonna have some classrooms that are gonna have kids that are not six feet apart. We get all desks in face the same direction, but you might have somebody three feet to the side, two, three feet to the side of you in a row. And so that's, that's kind of the biggest difference, I guess, and we'll see at the high school as far as that goes. Otherwise, you know, two-way traffic in the hallways, as Julie said, we're walking on the right-hand side of the hallways. Lockers, we, we love taking book bags with Otherwise, um, you know, two-way traffic in the hallways, as Julie said, we're walking on the right-hand side of the hallways, lockers, uh, we, we love taking a book bag with them already. So, um, in the past, science classrooms have may, have maybe said, "Don't bring your book bag in," so they went to their locker to put it into their locker. We're gonna have to work out a system this year where we cut down going to your locker as much as we can. Um, maybe open it during the lunch period as you leave lunch so you're not carrying all of your books with you for the day because I've picked up some of those backpacks, if you've got every book from every one of your classes in your backpack, those things weigh more than the kids sometimes. So giving them an opportunity to maybe, at these are the lunchtime, that way they maybe got two, three classes that they went to that they've got materials for, that they can drop off, pick up their things for the afternoon. Uh, but to, to try to limit as much as we can going to your locker during, during the day, same thing with the restroom. Um, you know, one at a time out of the classroom probably is the most that we're gonna be able to do, just trying to limit the flow, uh, of the number of people that are in the restroom at any given time. So, um, that'll look a little bit different for our students as well, so, um. You know, uh, otherwise school operations, same thing with office, uh, as many people have to be in the office. We did four, uh, just because the office is a little bit smaller, we put another, um, ISS room into the high school office. It actually became a little bit smaller even than it was, uh, so we took a little bit of square footage away. So, um, those things in place, again, uh, visitors in the buildings, same as the other buildings where we're saying no outside visitors at this time. So, um, even as far as our junior achievement, things like that, we've told them, they contacted me this week and I just said, um, at least probably for the first semester, we're looking at, if anything, virtual to come into the classrooms. So just to say outside visitors that aren't critical, um, to the day, not allowing them into the, into the building. So, um, still trying to devise a plan that we don't have in there because it's probably kind of a big one to tackle, uh, for locker rooms, things like that, for FIEC, uh, during the day, how do we get those students, um, safely in the locker room? Look, sometimes you have a little bit of a larger space, but you might, we might have twenty-five kids in a FIEC class too going into the locker room to get ready. Um, so that you won't see in the plan yet, if you still kind of try to devise a plan of how we do, um, FIEC. Some schools, I was at a hall last week with the, some area principals, they just said, "We're just not gonna change." And they're gonna go in their jeans and their t-shirts and, and have FIEC, um, because it's just the way it is. So, um, I'm not saying that's the way we'll go, but we've got to, we've got to look at that a little bit more and see where there's any other possibilities to maybe get around that hurdle a little bit too. Um, but, um, you know, outside of that, the school operations pieces look pretty much like the elementary and the middle school, the biggest one, like, as I said, the cohorting. I looked at it different ways and I just can't, um, you know, having all English, Ms. Mitchell's English classes rotate into her. Um, it just doesn't work with the high school schedule and the number of different options that they have. Uh, yes, Ms. Mitchell sees every, every junior student, um, but not the same semester, not the same time of the day. Uh, and so to, to try to get them into a classroom at any specific time would mess up their entire rest of their schedule. So we are gonna be seeing high school students with more contacts with more students, I guess you could say. As we move classes, you have different classes with different people mixing up grades, that it's gonna happen. Um, and that's where, again, I've maybe changed my stance a little bit on the masks as we went forward a little bit too, saying, if this is our best shot to stay in school and to have the kids here and to be able to have as much as close to a normal of a year as we can have, if, if that means that the masks are our best option, um, I'm all for it if it allows our kids to be in the school and get more of a normal day, so. Uh, that'd be the only, the only big thing at the high school, I guess, that would kind of be the difference. Um, looking back at last year's engagement when we had online learning, I'd say, um, we were right at about the ninety percent mark. Obviously, there were some varying degrees of those that were engaged. I think the biggest thing we saw at the high school was students, um, doing their work at the time that was convenient for them, time that worked for them. Some of them picked up jobs, some of them were doing things during the day and then would do their work at night, which made it difficult to get ahold of their teachers when, you know, when they had, uh, anything that they maybe needed to do at night there. So, um, what we've looked at in school operations there, um, without getting too far into it, is just an attendance way to, anybody that's learned it from home, a way to trap attendance during their scheduled period in school so that they're held accountable to being, having an online presence. Um, during eight-thirty hits, they're supposed to be at block one, there are gonna be a way where we have to have them on our, on our Zoom that shows that they are up, ready to go for block one at eight-thirty in the morning. Block two hits, they're present in block two. So, um, it just makes it easier for our teachers, easier for our students, uh, if, as, if they're available, seeing the live instruction, seeing it taking place, uh, and then for our teachers to know that, um, they can help them out a little bit more, uh, real time. So, um, that's what we're looking for as we go forward here. I'd say we probably had, um, about twenty-five students who, if we had been keeping the grades and, and, and giving a failing grade, we would have about twenty-five students that probably would have not had a passing grade. Typically, we'd see about a dozen to fifteen if we were in school. Uh, so we probably saw an extra twelve, ten to twelve students that probably, um, you know, would have had a failing grade at least in one course if we would have been keeping that grade. Uh, and most of it was just due to just not being, didn't, didn't turn in class well. Uh, so again, that's where the attendance piece, I think will help them out this year too if they are learning outside of the school building. Um, swivels will be a big thing in the high school, uh, that's where training's gonna be, is gonna be very, very important for the swivels as we are going to try to, like I said, have a real-time instruction going on with anybody that's not in the school. Um, so at eight-thirty, uh, the, the classes live to resume, you are there getting the instruction from home, just like somebody that's in the classroom is getting that instruction. Um, we also talked about it being important for those that are gone from a lot of school for events, uh, where you now have that instruction that you can go watch, um, that a teacher will put out a Google Classroom, uh, you can go see if you were not in class that day. So the swivels will be very, very important. I think our teachers, um, will, will definitely buy into them once they see how easy they are. Um, might look a little daunting right away, but once you get into it, it's just, you know, starting up Zoom, recording it and it, it follows you as you're given your instruction. So I think they'll buy in, um, and it'll become second nature to them. Uh, it'll be expected, uh, to begin this school year, Google Classroom, some of those things to be expected at the beginning of the year. So we're better prepared if we have to go to a remote learning or we have students outside of school buildings. They'll be better prepared, parents will know, uh, the same dates that they're coming into the elementary school and the middle school, will have orientation at the high school to bring in parents, meet with teachers, let them know how the Google Classroom will look, um, just be much more prepared, as, as someone said many times. Last year was just a survive, here we go, like, it's, you're, you're in, now we can better prepare. We, we know what some of those issues were last year, we can, we can obviously add them, uh, earlier this year. So it's kind of the high school in a nutshell, um, if there are, are questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I guess I do have a question, Matt, for Mr. Munkers, because you touched on, I would ask the other principals, he, he touched on something I'm very concerned about. If we would have to go to a level four, we need to take, are you going to require help attendance by Zoom or something in the elementary and the middle school? What are your plans there, I guess, to make sure the students are engaged? You have the parents, both parents are getting up at eight, going to work, not getting home until five-thirty and then their student has another work that was about to become pressure on the parents last year that we need to try and eliminate, so I was just curious how would you guys sort of do that with your students?
I think at the elementary level, you can't require that real-time attendance, um, piece only because we have students that rely on their parents to be there to do that. And so, um, at the elementary, I think it has to be a combination of task completion and, um, and, you know, that, that they've watched the instructional video, um, that was provided to them. Um, I think it has to be a combination of that. I don't think it can be that you checked in at this time for every student because every individual student's family situation is going to be a little different. And in the moments that we had some, some like virtual meetings with, um, students last year at the elementary, you know, that we did, I mean, we had parents that loved it and we had parents that said, "That doesn't work for me because at an o'clock in the morning, I'm at work." And so, um, you know, I do think that you have to, you have to look at their work completion and that, you know, some of the programs allow us to see that they've used the video and so that we have that opportunity to use that for attendance as well.
A couple of thoughts quick that we talked about and, and they alluded to. One of the number one reasons that we are doing such, we're being so diligent about cohorting um, is because we want to keep, especially, we know it's, it's harder for elementary and middle school students to do, to work virtually from home. You know, we have a good chunk of high school students who are already doing virtual instruction and we feel that they should be able to do it on their own. Um, where, uh, especially our elementary students and some of our lower middle school students, to be able to, um, go in a synchronous environment is difficult. So the locker, we can keep that here by utilizing all the different areas, um, we will, um, for that reason. And, and that's the other piece of the swivels is, um, so that even at the elementary level, parents, um, it, 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 there's still a level of commitment that we need from parents, especially with young children, um, because we can't send teachers into their, into their houses. But with the swivels, we can now record the lesson and post them so that as a parent, I'm not trying to teach a multiplication lesson or a science lesson. The lesson will be there, um, but parents will still need to leave their child to that lesson probably and make sure that they're getting on and doing it. Uh, but the devices and the technology we purchased should alleviate some of that stress for parents. Um, now for some middle school and all high school, um, they will, they will be expected to, to log on at the time their class is, um, to, and that's where that academic integrity has to come back, that we allow to kind of drift away last year, um, just because it was emergency remote instruction, not true distance learning. Frank, you have anything else?
Well, yeah, like, we are planning on, on trying to keep things in synchronous as we can. Um, with the realization that, that there are always connectivity issues and, and individual issues that, that we, we deal with and did deal with in, in the spring of twenty-twenty. Um, those recorded Zoom lessons will be important. Uh, and then the work completion, uh, you know, with our, with our ICU and parent notification, uh, a parent knows if, if, if the, if the work has been done or not. Uh, so there can be a little bit more independence, but, uh, we, we want as synchronous as we can to stay attached.
And I think with some of the platforms at the elementary, I mean, I mean, you visually saw your kids, right? I mean,
That's what I say several times.
Yeah, through their, through their CSO platform. I mean, you, you were visually seeing them. Not always were you in a live chat with them, but you were seeing them.
We just have three areas left. We have activities, transportation, and then the organization piece. Um, a- as you, you were listening, um, some of the things that, um, I think probably come to mind as barriers in all of this is, number one, we need staff to pull all of this off. We need bus drivers, we need teachers, we need associates. We know, and from the last department of Ed, Department of Health, um, superintendent meeting we had on Thursday, um, one, it's gonna be pretty difficult to keep, um, you know, should we get exposures in school, um, that close contact piece, um, we have to get all these other measures in place. And even then, um, if a, if a staff member is in close contact with, uh, with a student, um, that, in, that establishes that fifteen minutes at six feet, they, they will be having to go and follow that Department of Health protocol. I can't guarantee that we will have enough staff throughout the year to pull it off. We have a substitute teacher meeting, um, that we'll be posting, um, coming up on the eighteenth. That information will go out like it always does, um, and we will be contacting our normal substitutes and, and of course, we are always looking for additional ones to come. And we have a substitute day where we, we're able to get to know them, we're able to explain our, our expectations and that sort of thing. But again, um, Jackie, one of the questions you had had, and we, we had other areas reach out to us in the community about if we wanted to go to Hyphren, if we wanted to, um, utilize addition, other areas, say, um, the Lutheran Church was great about reaching out and saying, "We have areas for you to use if you want to take groups of kids there." Well, that's great, except I don't have enough staff to do it. And so we really thought that then we're hauling staff to another location. Um, we have enough areas, we really felt like in the elementary and the middle school to, to do those limited cohorting and reducing capac- capacity right here where we can rotate staff instead of trying to staff another location. So that's the reason we didn't accept, um, the help of getting off, off campus. We just really thought it allevi- it actually caused more stress than it would alleviate. Um, the barriers of, of cohorting at the high school, again, there's just, we're very limited there. Um, and so, um, we know that it, it does run within a higher risk. Keep in mind, that's also why if we have a breakout in, say, third grade, if we cohort appropriately, only make third grade should have to, should have to do the self-isolation or the self-hortening at home, that's our whole goal. The high school, there's gonna be more exposures, we know that. We also know that they're the most, um, easily able group to virtually learn from home. So that does work fine, not fine, but that works better. Um, we have to, um, one thing that wasn't talked about with masks, um, it is our intention to ask parents to provide masks for their child. Now, we also know that if we require, we will have some here, we really think that masks are gonna be, um, something that a parent is gonna wanna individualize for their child. There's CDC guidelines and requirements and we want them to follow that. But we also know that a student, um, will, it will be put on student supply list, those updated lists, we'll ask parents to pro- provide those for students. Um, but we will have them here for when that doesn't work out. Same with staff, um, staff are gonna be in them a lot. If I was a staff member, I'd wanna buy my own mask, I'd wanna check it out, I'd wanna try it out, I'd wanna know. We will have some here, what we won't have here is, we won't shop individually for, um, two hundred staff and a thousand kids to make sure everybody has the mask they want. We will follow CDC guidelines and have pretty generic ones should people want us to provide them. Um, so let's move really quick activities. Um, as you know, just last week, or, I might weeks or, last week or the week before, the South Dakota High School Athletic Association got their recommendations, their guidelines out for schools. Um, this, guys, is gonna change again. We have, we have, you know, almost a month, we, we're gonna get into the collegiate athletic fall season. We're gonna learn a lot from them, but as of right now, fall sports are on, they're a go when they're starting on time. That being said, we are working through some practices, and I apologize that that top's a little bit hard to read. Uh, this is all again in your packet, uh, activities are on page fifteen. Um, we're, we, we, we met with the two athletic directors, um, some of the fall coaches. Um, I thought, what I, what I heard from them was one great thing, when we come back to the discussion of masks, they said, and they were very clear about the fact that they, they were asking their student athletes, "What do you think about coming back to school and having to wear a mask?" And every one of those, um, coaches said, their kids said, "I don't care, just get me back and let me be out for, for the thing I like to do." Um, and so I really think that our community, our parents, need to listen to the kids. The kids are saying, "We don't care if we have to wear a mask, get me back to school, let me play football, let me golf, let me wrestle in the, in the, in the winter." They are so resilient to the things we ask of them. And so I just really encourage parents to take that initiative and even if you don't believe in masks, if your, if your child's coming, promote it. Be proactive to say, "You know what, we're gonna make do with this." Um, masks are something that's a little bit trickier in athletics. We're taking, again, guidance from the CDC. We know that sometimes coaches are close and in that case, you're gonna need to pull those masks up. Um, so we are working with, um, Sjekke de Borre and the CDC and, and South Dakota Athletic Association guidelines on, um, what we can do to try to keep our fall sports, um, safe. With sanitizing, keeping that six-feet distance when possible, obviously there's times it doesn't work. Um, the locker rooms is probably our biggest barrier because that's indoors. We gotta keep locker room use under that fifteen-minute, um, exposure timing, so we're limiting that. And, and all of those actual processes will be outlined. Um, those are some things there on practice. The spectator and concession stand use is another area. When we come in in level two, now, guys, we, we, we know that, um, we could easily move from level two to a more of a hybrid before the first football or golf or volleyball, um, event. And in that case, um, things will change with spectator use and that sort of thing. But in a level two, um, we're going to encourage masks for spectators. Um, I would like to think that, you know, we'll get, we'll get buy-in on that. Um, we, uh, will follow the activity association guidelines. We're not making this stuff up on our own and that's what we want people to remember. Um, you know, we try to teach kids to, to, um, sometimes we get, sometimes we get rules, we get expectations we don't like. Whatever we have for spectator plan is coming from a power bigger than us. So, um, we just really want people to remember that. Um, the concession stand use, again, the Department of He- Health will help us with that. There'll be Plexiglas up there to try to keep our kids and staff safer. Um, but, um, we will just follow those, that guidance. Transportation, um, that one's hard when we're putting a lot of kids on a bus, uh, cohorting again goes kind of out the window. But what you're gonna find in a minute and what is important here that- But what you're going to find in a minute and what is important here, that is, if you want to wear, if you want to travel in a student bus school vehicle, you will wear a mask. So that means if you're traveling for a sport, you will wear a mask. And that's where our coaches were talking to the kids again. The kids didn't seem to mind a bit. You know, do they want to wear the mask? No. Do they want to travel to go play and compete? Absolutely, they'll wear the mask. Students, if they want to travel with their family, families have to work with the athletic director or coach in that situation, we will allow it. And we're going to limit who travels to games, to away games. Transportation, I think I need to go back, which, I'm just going to have you look on page 19 on transportation real quick. One big thing on transportation, we are doing away with in-town transportation in my recommendation right now or in this document, unless you live beyond a mile away. There's a mile perimeter that we have figured out. The home point is the elementary school. If you live beyond a mile of that circle perimeter, we will pick you up. If you don't, we will, we have suspended that in-town transportation for you. We cannot cohort all day and then throw kids of all ages and grades onto an in-town bus. We are hopeful that at some point, we'll move away from that level and be able to bring that back. For right now, we will only be transporting Haven and those students who live outside of that mile perimeter. All out of district or all of our rural routes will still take place. Students will be required to wear masks if they want to drive. If they don't want to wear a mask, then they will have to find their way to school on a different form of transportation. We will be strategic about loading, unloading. There will be, there will be hand sanitizers, and we are looking at putting Plexiglas behind the drivers. Something new just came out this week on that. And then what I am hoping that you will let me purchase are those ionizing filters to put in each one. I really, I feel really strongly about doing that. And then we can move them into different rooms during the day too, but we would put those on activity buses, spend buses, and regular route buses. Bark, organization.
For employees? I give you a draft copy of what we will be going by. We're required to administer the families' first policies where staff get an extra two weeks of sick leave for certain uses. So this is about five pages of what that is. I'll be giving out information to the staff just in a nutshell. This goes a little bit more in-depth as to the particulars of what it can be used for, what comes first, how much they get paid, that type of thing. We do have on there that if somebody travels out of the country or to a hotspot, that they will have to self-quarantine for 14 days without pay, which the board can change if they want to, but that was what we, we thought would be best for the, the school district. So if you look at that and have questions, just give me a call.
And don't you see the depth of this, or did this on Sunday, which just shows the commitment?
Just to find any hot spots?
We, Jeff Trail provided us with a CDC website that allows us to be able to go and look so that we know when, what I told staff at this point is that I can't tell you what those spots are until you go, but I can know before you go if it's considered one.
Basically, as long as they have this, if there's a hotspot, I don't have, and they can go.
That was what we had, was a discussion with like, it's like, right now, someone will spend a week in Florida, they'll wonder if you have your cases or if they're from Arizona. But if you go to Wyoming, you risk, well, the international, the recommendation was to, you're at your own risk because the state department, CDC, or anybody who knows international travelers, that was a little easier.
That's all we have. There's pieces in there that tonight, what I asked me to do is approve the plan. So now would be time for that to go ahead and, and lead any discussion that you want. If there's parts of the plan you want to pull out that you don't agree with. We've had lots of committee work with many of you in the room and, and attendance creating the document, but I also understand that there could still be parts that you're not comfortable with. The masks, again, the blue highlighted is that the origin is on the plan. If you want to change it from required to recommended, that would be something we would need to include in the motion. So if there's parts that you're not comfortable with and discuss more of that, I'll let you lead that before you approve it.
I guess the biggest thing is this is, like you said, more of a living document. It's something that is going to be changed as we learn new guidelines. So, I mean, I think what, what we recommend right now isn't necessarily what we're going to be recommending a month from now. This is just a good starting point, so. And I do want to thank the administrators and the board who put in a lot of time and given us done. So thank you, guys, for, for doing the, doing the work.
We put that disclaimer on the first page of the document we talked about, about it's a living document, something to change. What happens tonight, you can change tomorrow morning, guidance will be quickly. And just make sure that we have a version number or a date on those revisions. Just hopefully simplify it for people, but just, I know we talked about, but if it's there in writing, you're going to remind, say, hey, just don't hang your hat on, says something's changed between now and August 31st.
Yes. The disclaimer, and then always where, where we post this, always have a date of the last.
Right, so reference it, we can grab it, parents can grab it, staff can grab it, we just know that.
So how does that work if, I mean, if we're going to change things, do we have to approve the, the board going to approve all changes? Or is it just something that, when there's major changes?
What, what we have done is Barbara and I have a highlighted list of the things that fall away from some of the normal, what we consider to be administrator, things that outside of the administrator control. So for this evening, the number one thing would be the mask use because boards have the ability to, to require the masks, not administrators, but in board policy, you have that right. So masks would be something that we would add tonight. The in-town busing moves away from what we have done before. So the in-town busing would be something that we would want to have boards change. Some of the organization piece with staff could, it, it really maybe should be, although all of it really lines up with our current policy. So it would have to be a pretty significant change for that. The only thing would be if you wanted to go away from the travel piece. And I believe that is those three things are what we had down.
Well, I, I guess.
And oh, you know what, the other, there's one more. We have, in this plan, and Jeff made a good point, I highlighted it on the new one, we have suspended all facility use requests for the time being. We just felt that if we, if we're not allowing anyone but essential staff and students in the building, we, we certainly can't then put in, bring in volunteer coaches and things for younger grades that are not, or, or people who are not our staff members. We, we can't have them, we can't ensure they're binding by our policies, and we, we aren't going to have that in for the time being. Again, I hope we can move away from that.
Summer is activity pass discussion now or August or something?
It could be, it could be something to put in now, just so that you know how to prepare. The one thing we talked about with activity passes was that we, we worried that if we were to issue activity passes as is, and then that the, the, any of the seasons are suspended, people would want to return, that would be an incredible amount of work for Bart. So we thought of two options. One would be to sell them still with the disclaimer that they are non-refundable. Some people just really want to support our programs, and they would be fine taking their chance. We also could just not sell them and have people pay as they come. Or, but either way, we felt like we should still sell the punch tickets, the ten activity punch tickets. So I, I guess if you would like us to reapprove what they would be, last time, it would be a matter of adding that non-refundable piece to it or not selling them at all. So that I would put in the plan based on the recommendation right now, and then you would approve it with everything.
I guess I would be fine with the non-refundable piece, I guess, what is the rest of the board?
Still provide people different options if they don't want to take, so to speak, on a full season pass, we can punch, or they can pay upon entry. The passive would be nice because it was, especially the season pass, because it was just, like, you know, we just have it at home, we want to exchange the cash. Transactional, it's corporate.
Yeah, I think Summer pointed out that a lot of times people should just support, so. One thing in the activities that we did touch base on is there's still guidance. I thought it was going to be out on the 25th, and I apologize if it came out this weekend and I just missed it, but there is still that guidance coming on our vocal and instrumental music. So we are still kind of waiting for that because it's coming from our state organization again. But we are, our goal is to have it in as safe a way as we can, and that's part of why we, I'm requesting those filters. So those five things, masks, in-town busing, travel, facility use, activity tickets would be the main components that if we wanted to change away from what's in this document, we would, we'd be able to revisit them in August. And I would guarantee there will be something that comes up before August, and this, I'll bring a revision in August. I will say that I have asked Jeff Crome to create a return to learn FAQ tab on the website because I think sometimes, I, we, we tried at first to kind of go on to social media and answer some questions, and truly, that's just a very, sometimes disheartening way to go about, you know, getting information out, and I don't really want to keep doing that. So I think that this way, we will set up a protocol for FAQs to go on that document. They will get submitted to, probably to Sarah. We still have, the, the page is created, and I didn't want to override Jeff Crome this week. And that any question we get, ones we've already gotten, ones that are in the, because I think maybe it'll be easier, because there's some really good ones on this new document I sent you today, but that way, people can ask me a question, I can put it on there, and hopefully, people just keep going visiting that. So in that, on our webpage, this document, once it's completely finalized here tomorrow and checked for etymology or that sort of thing, along with that FAQ, will both be there for, for parents and staff to go on and, and look at. I think that should help because I, you know, if Marcy has a question, there's probably a good chance somebody else does, so instead of me just answering Marcy, I will answer her, but I will, then if I approve the question, it'll be on the website, I will also put it on there. I will not put, you know, the negative things that people would like to say, you know, that, that can stay in another place. So I will approve everything that gets put on there.
Just one point I want to make, a reminder, to say the obvious. The reason a lot of the steps on the plan and committees and the full return to learn group struggled through the last month and a half, I was trying to say, okay, we got feedback from our surveys, we heard feedback from parents. There's a different duty of care that we have in a school setting. So some of our decisions aren't as cut and dry as like, well, we may not social distance at home, we may not do this at home. We cannot control that whatsoever, what happens after 3:18 and the kid goes home or after a school activity. You know, they're going to get together, it's out of our control, but we have to, with the masking, social distancing, do the best we can while we're, while we have those, those kids in our care. So I'd say some of this stuff, it's not fun, it seems overly burdensome at times, but legal council and this discussion for medical groups kind of don't have choice on a lot of it. And then the final piece, one of the most controversial of the last few weeks, maybe to kind of clarify, was the mask piece. And I'll speak for Lena himself, we were in the PPE wellness group, and we struggled. Lena and I were both on the fence back and forth, had a lot of conversation about it where to go. And that's what really clarified the last week. Medical, State Medical Association making comment, very making comments, you know, that, hey, we strongly encourage schools do this. And we get feedback from our, from our students and our academics, they just get us back. It's worth, it's worth, it's, it's, once again, it's a pain, but, you know, and if it does keep some of our students from getting sick and our staff, great, it was well worth it. And just understand that no matter what we do, it's not eliminating the risk in our facilities. That's, that's, the new reality is, what's our level of acceptance and tolerance? And that's something, that's why the final change is we get into the fall and see where our community numbers are, and hopefully, they remain well.
So I have a couple questions just about operationalizing masks, and I like, I do like the wording that we have in there, especially where, as I'm understanding, if I cannot maintain a six-foot social distance, then I should, I'm required to wear a mask, is how I understand it. How will that be clearly out there for all students and staff to know when I enter this area or when I'm in this spot, I have to wear a mask? And the other thing I would say is, so Miss Anderson gets up and starts going around the desk, does that mean as she walks by, everyone's putting on masks, and then, or how, how does that look and how does that work? And then the last thing I'll say around sporting events or extracurriculars and what we do with our fans, I think it's going to be tough, and maybe I'm reading too much into this, I think it's going to be tough for our students when we tell them, if you're within six feet, you have a mask on, and then they go to a game, and if you don't, it's this next area, or you don't, and he doesn't wear one. So then what message does that send? So I'm not saying I have answers to those, but those are my concerns.
And, and so the, the last part of that, you know, right now, we, we just took that guidance of the recommendation from the South Dakota High School Athletic Association for fans, but your point, which I think is, is a good one, is, you know, they're not, they're not making that recommendation based on schools saying they're requiring it. So if we are saying we require it for students, maybe we do require it in, in the, if you want to come. And, and maybe that's a component we want to look at further and finalize in August. We would not have a, a football game before that. It would give us some time to see what other schools who are now requiring masks are doing. That's one thing that we have not, we haven't spent any, any time on really. If you would be okay with that. And, and the other question is the enforcement piece. We also need a little bit of time. We, we really have knew that this board, we could go either way. We knew it could go to just, we encourage it when, or we require it. And we know that if we say require, that has a whole nother level of work associated with it on how we do that. And so what I told these three was, let's get to the point that you've got your school operations piece figured out, so we know whether we're recommending or requiring masks. And then after tonight, if we do go away with require, then their next step is to figure out that enforcement piece, because I did not have them do it unless we could, you know, for sure. But we do know that that's, that's going to be, that's going to be something.
I think, I don't know if that's something that, similar to the language of this is a, it's a faulty document, along with that, that we are not in any way suggesting we are limiting risk by anything we're doing. We're going to try to mitigate risk as much as we can, but, so I've already heard like, well, why the heck are we doing sports? Because now you're, you know, you just tried to social distance, mask, kid, whatever, now you're going to go play on a football field where they're going to crash into each other. And so that doesn't make any sense. Well, that's not necessarily true. We're just mitig, we're mitigating risk where we can. We also know, to Jeff's point, when they leave here, they're still going to go to their buddies' house and, and. they're still going to go to their buddy's house and go and basically play physical or whatever. So we know that stuff is going to happen, but what we're trying to do is mitigate it to the extent possible while they're in the building, so to speak.
Back to that level, Eric. We've had a lot of people say that to us as administrators, and we just keep reinforcing the fact that we do, the school board and the administrators have, have a duty to provide the safest environment. And what happens outside of that environment is out of our control. But the enforcement of the mask is something, you know, we, we, and that's where, when we met with our activity folks, they really want their, their student athletes to get behind the message, to get behind and help promote that this is okay, you know. And not have people fight it. And we know that parents play a huge role in that. If a kid hears this, his parents or her parent complaining about the mask between now and, and the first day of school, the, the way they, they respond to our requests and things is going to be different. We talked about in the classroom, really spacing off where teachers are with a mask, without mask, and then anytime they go in front of that and are going to be in students, then the masks go up. So we have looked into some of that, but we haven't put it down yet. Jeff, the board was looking at some floor, like, activity, that's something that could stick a little bit better so that we could keep kind of a, and ask that mask on the move, okay? If teachers on the move, masks go up for everybody, because she might come to my desk, or, goodbye.
So, I'm just trying to think of the, what's going to be the most disruptive to people's lives in this busing thing? I can imagine it's going to be a hot topic, and probably have the most, probably, am I about to go back? So, I guess additional thoughts around that, or are we comfortable with, you know, I can't get my kid to school. I don't know what I'm going to do. Single parent, whatever, whatever the thing is, you know, it's December, this can blow, blah, 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 all those things. What are, what are their options?
Um, I guess I was the one who suggested that, based on, I was on a, a conference call with the state of Minnesota, put together a COVID transportation piece. And that's what a lot of the busing companies and towns and school districts in Minnesota were looking at doing. Is just setting, and some of them had two and a half miles. I mean, it was all just, it was kind of pick your distance and eliminate that from your in-town busing, just to get buses to come to school more empty, more, more spacing in the buses. Basically encouraging even your rural kids, families to, that are able to bring their kids to school, eliminate them on, on bus routes. But in town, having, having community, they call them walking buses, where parents would basically get together and walk a group of kids to school. And that's why, I mean, we were kind of looking at that mile radius. I mean, at least half of that, you can easily walk a half a mile to school. You know, you start getting that outer reaches, yeah, I mean, a mile is a long way to go in ten below zero. You know, it's, it's one of those things. In-town busing is a fairly new thing in Mill Rapids. So we're kind of hoping that it's not going to be that big of an issue. But knowing that we need to have buses coming in more empty. And like Julie said about the whole cohorting thing in the elementary school, how do you cohort when you're going to a certain area in town? You know, the fourth graders live right next to the first graders, eighth graders, and they're all getting on the bus at the same time. You know, that, that's, that's kind of the whole thing. I mean, at least out in town, you hear a lot of times, families can sit together. They're, they're living together anyway, so they're, they're breaking that cohort thing. So, yeah, I, I agree. I mean, it's.
I just want to be a little bit into it, you know, or, you know, kind of have some.
But it, it's one of those things. I mean, my kids, my kids ride the bus, and they, you know, when they get in town, they get full. You know, I mean, they come out of the country and they're hardly half full. And then they get to town and they go to a couple different stops, and all of a sudden, it's shoulder to shoulder, I've got to the school. Not a long time, but it, it's still there. I mean, that's kind of where we thought that whole social distancing really broke down, and the lack of cohorting, I mean, that's just, it's a big piece. And, and that's something that, like Summer said, too, that can change once we kind of, the, the whole thing is, let's get schools started. And then let's see what happens, other communities and in our community. Maybe that's something by winter time, we go back to in-town busing. Maybe not. I mean, yeah. It was, it was just the easiest thing to eliminate a lot of passengers, limited space. So, when we discuss, we, what was the number? Almost needed a double or possibly. And we can barely staff our buses with drivers today. So that's really one of, by the option to do that idea, you should take the cost factor out.
I know that a few parents that I had talked to about the in-town busing, they had kind of said, look, the athletes have said, oh, the mask, like, just on our kids in school. So if that means that we have to figure out a means for them to get there, we're willing to do that to a greater. So it will be an inconvenience for some, but I feel that for the majority, a lot of people were buying in that they would have to get them here.
We really felt like when that priority was to keep students in school, in the school buildings, the own, if once we had, if we would have had to start tracking exposure, we wouldn't be able to keep a third grader who was in in-town bus. If they weren't, if they were on an in-town bus, suddenly we have to maybe let the whole school go for the, the time period instead of just that third grade classroom. So it all, every decision we made, it went back to those priorities.
Will there be any change for St. Mary's rural transportation?
Rural.
Because we think that St. Mary's is in the rural, so you'll continue to do that.
Yep, and we have figured out the route so that we are able to still hit Haven students, St. Mary's Haven students, because we're going to be dropping elementary students off last, we'll be able to take St. Mary's Haven morning students back with just their group. And then Haven in-town busing will still happen in cohort groups. It might take us three trips, but if a student is in Haven, they will still need an in-town bus pass to get to Haven. If you need Haven, you can't, you can't have a parent drive you there. So, but we will maintain the cohorting, so let's try it.
Any other questions on the return to learning policy?
Could I ask one? Has there been any discussion about the parallel learning with allowing activities?
Yep, that's in our document also. That's fine, because it actually probably needs to be highlighted. At this time, if you choose parallel instruction, you are saying, I don't feel safe being in a school environment. So then you will not be participating in activities either. At the high school level. And a big piece of that also is if you're a homeschool student right now, you need to be active in at least just one class at the high school level to participate in activities. Homeschool students in the middle school, because we really want to be able to create enrichment activities for them here at the school. If you're a middle school student who selects parallel instruction, you still are able to. So we aligned it with our homeschool. Even though we don't really, you know, it, it, it kind of goes against what people are saying. If they're saying, I don't feel comfortable coming, we just felt like because we did not take that away at the homeschool level, we should not end the parallel instruction. So it does look different at the middle school, but at the high school, you're not able to.
So even for the individual sports into, I was just thinking, like my son, if I wanted to do parallel, but he only plays golf, that's a pretty socially distanced sport.
Right, right.
It's some, it's something to consider.
Yeah, yeah.
It is a living document, and it's something that we as a board can make exceptions to.
We hear things, that's what we, like, for the last three months, we think we're pretty set on something. We hear a suggestion or a comment like, like that right now, and I don't really have an argument against it. So then we, we can change things when we hear something like that.
Just simply asking, because I, I feel like that probably will come up a lot.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, something like that makes a lot of sense, where basketball, homeschooling, you know, parallel learning because you're afraid of, of going to school and then coming to play basketball.
Right.
One thing that might be worth looking at before that applied, I don't know when that sport starts, though, is the activities association and their guidance does level the different activities based on the risk. And so if it's a lower risk activity, that, and, and it goes along with the person's intent for parallel instruction, that might be something we consider, where if it's a higher risk for it, it doesn't go along with their intent to parallel instruct necessarily. So I think if we were to get some requests like that, it would be something that we would want to take seriously and take a look at further.
Okay, is there any other questions?
On the transportation, who will be enforcing the masks when students are getting on? And they're wearing them?
They will be, and you know, it's going to be one of those too. We, we talked about this little, we, we couldn't begin to staff them. You know, we have high houses, schoolhouse rugs, activity rugs. Kids aren't going to get many chances. If you don't want to wear the mask, and, and, you know, you're not, we will again have to, just like the enforcement piece at the, at the school level, we're not going to, it's, it's going to be easy on, on the bus. Because if you're on the bus, you have a mask on it. So we'll figure out how to document that, and it just will be mandatory. And they, they will, they will lose privileges if they don't, but it will be. And part of why we're doing no mask on the buses is really to protect our bus drivers. And, and they, they will, they will be really good to, to work with that piece. It does add another element to it.
Well, the buses all have cameras on them, so I mean, if the bus driver says somebody wasn't wearing their mask.
Yeah, we won't make them pull over, you know, or peeking at the time. But they look back and not where we felt like they could go, all right, Fran, go look at the bus. Go look at the cameras or, or whatnot, and, and then you can have a conversation and see what, where it goes from there.
Because I guess the transportation committee, what we really felt is, especially in a year like this, we're looking at busing purely as a privilege, you know, I mean, and that's why, you know, we don't feel that it's that big of a deal to try and enforce a whole mask-wearing policy. And it's one of those things, I'm sure there's exceptions to that too, you know. Kindergarten students on a bus, I mean, they might start chewing their mask instead of wearing it. And you really can't enforce it near to the, the same level to a kindergarten kid as you can some people that's in fifth grade. But it's, it's about enforcing, or it's about protecting the bus driver. And it's easy to just say, hey, if you can't follow the rules, that you're going to have, you're going to find a way to school.
Now, the CDC does provide exceptions for mask use, and we will abide by those as well. It will have to be a medical documented, medically documented issue with interference of respiratory with a mask. So there, you know, we will make sure that bus drivers know if there are students on their bus that are not able to wear that. But we're going to, you know, that most, in most cases, people can wear a shield then. And so that if someone isn't wearing a mask, it could be done that we still need you to wear a shield, understanding that you won't wear a mask, but the doctors will help us determine that.
Cool. And we've had it where we can't find a sub, and then what happens in those circumstances?
Well, we've had minimal times, and we've had, you know, teachers can sub for one another during their prep period at the high school level, and then they get paid for that. Because sometimes teachers just leave like for an hour or something. So we have some of those systems in play. We do have associates, which we don't like to utilize that much for subbing, but if it happens for small periods of time. We, we really feel like if we had to pick a barrier for success of a return to learning plan, it is what you're asking, because we just can't create bodies.
So is, is there a way, or any strategies that we could do to build a bigger pool before school starts? Or have greater incentive?
Yeah, whatever it is.
Because even in our, we're starting to see this now with kids getting, you know, whatever, the diagnosis. So now it just puts an incredible stress on your staffing, very, very quickly.
After my Department of Ed and Department of Health called the, uh, last week, I don't know how we will not run into problems and run into problems very quickly. So I think that's a great suggestion that maybe we should think about before we start advertising for this, well, even after, we, we know we have the substitute meeting. We always have subs coming beforehand. So that maybe on the 18th, if we could think of ways to incentivize it before that, that might stir up some. You know, we approved in July the substitute rate, but that doesn't mean we couldn't, for this one year, have a, have a, you know, some places have, you know, ads, that sounds terrible, but something like that. Because they are bringing themselves into a more high-risk environment. So it could be maybe at the August 10th board meeting that we look to, we, we get some ideas for that and, and bring it to you before that meeting on the 18th, so that we could maybe publicize that a little bit, that we understand. Bus drivers too, we have a, we, you know, I'm worried that, we are cutting down already on transportation, but I'm worried that we won't have the bus drivers we need fairly quickly too, should things just get, you know, a little bit rough in the community. So maybe some incentives for both of those areas.
And then the last thing is, do we have a staff number dedicated, or have we figured out how we're going to manage all these people coming and going in and out of sick leaves?
Yep, and that was on a slide earlier, but I, Katie didn't really explain it. We have to hire, have to, we still have one position left to advertise for, and, and that's with the addition of the new media center. We looked at, I had Sarah look into contracting for that. Sandra got back to us and said they, they do not have anyone who, they do not contact or contract for that. A bear has not gotten back to us yet. So as we're waiting for that, our intent was that, we do have a middle school, this was Drew's idea, where we really, we still have a, a middle school associate in the media center, or high school associate in the media center that needs to be hired. And we felt like if it was going to be an honest person, someone whose job was more sedative, more supervising, you know, comings and goings, that might be the person to do it. So we, we wanted to, we thought about this week, advertising for a media center associate with the COVID tracking, tracing component with it. Unless we hear back from a bear that that's a possibility, but Sandra said they do not. So that's our intent, is to have somebody right on, right there in the building. Jill has, has been very, you know, forthright in saying, and, and there just is no way we could tackle, she could tackle that. So I'm afraid if not, it will get thrown on our secretaries or our nurses, and they just can't be able to keep up. But pairing it with a, a position that's already full-time, that typically gets paired with another duty, that could be the duty. We felt like that way they're already in the system. That was, that was Mr. Bunker's idea, so I think it's a pretty good one. What else are we forgetting?
Have there any other questions? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Fall 2020 Return to Learn Plan. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Fall 2020 Return to Learn Plan as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item, indoor air quality, Return to Learn Expenditure.
That's the one that I came to you. So this came this afternoon, Jay came, what I had, sorry. I had the original quote for the 26 filters for the buses and Haven. Haven will be purchasing six of these, they're all associated included in the, in the whole. But then I added those areas, those other unmanageable areas, our wrestling room, our locker rooms. And we know we will be utilizing these in the isolation room. That's what happens when I run to the cashier and pay for it. You've got a lot of the other stuff, but. What we have is, there's 26 of the filters. And again, 20 of them will stay on Del Rapids buses and six will go into Haven. And then we have the actual. Sorry, I had, I had some of my base for me and we didn't quite all get there. Julie, will you bring it up here? So we have 20, 26. And then there is a mobile or a standalone unit for both choir, the choir room, the band room, and then the wrestling room and the locker rooms. Those are bigger and all they do, like I had said earlier, is they push out the ion, or they push out ionization to kind of attack and kill the bacteria, the viruses. Some places have utilized these in their wrestling rooms and they have seen a decrease in infections. That alone is something that I like, you know, it's not that I don't like the shields that we're purchasing, but this is something we can use even after we are, we are through with this. Thank you. I'm gonna pull up a second record. Sorry. Okay, so we have wrestling. Two in the weight rooms, 26 of the units. No, I'll put it to your office. Matt, can we just move on to the next one and then, I want you guys to see these, everybody will purchase that too.
Okay, so we'll table that right now and we'll move on to review revised Del Rapids School District policies and regulations. Those students who have counted second, we have approval. Does anybody have anything on those second?
I do, the second part of this, you know, also where you're drug testing. I understand the first one here, if they have suspicion or see a student that they think is per taken or done that, I understand when they ran them. If it's the second one, they can just randomly pick someone's test, or am I reading this wrong? There's a number one and a number two here. And I guess I, I was just wondering about that. I understand that there's suspicion, but I.
That was the language our attorney suggested we put in last year. Because what is considered to be a reasonable suspicion to view may be of concern to parents, that sort of thing. If you have this in here, we can then, we can then utilize those tests, which it's a very simple test that we have on site from the Royal Institute. I don't know if you have anything further to add, but that was his, his suggestion.
Legally, you can't even say suspicionless. You can have a random drug test, like you said, you could pick out any football player you wanted to at any point in time and say, legally say, we're gonna drug test you.
You can do that.
You can, yep. For athletics, you can, suspicionless, you could just randomly select anybody you want to, yep.
Alright, and that's been, I would say that I just was, how long has that been, for years or is this recent?
Yeah, I did, she's, I did my first graduate tour there 10 years ago. I did my on-performance enhancing drugs. It was legal at that point in time to do suspicionless. Yeah, they just became basically saying, you've got a right to know that you're on a level playing field if you're competing. And so therefore a school has the right, as you participate in your athletics, a school has a right to check at any point in time, just randomly if they want to. You wouldn't have to put that into policy, you could say it has to be a suspicion, but legally suspicionless, you can test anybody at any, that it's out for a sport at any point in time.
Well, and it's like summer stuff too, I mean, if you put this in, maybe our policy technically is only testing on suspicion, but legally we're covered because someone can say, you know, I mean, then there's no gray area there. We can do it anyway, so.
Yeah, I don't know, I suppose, if you were to test the same student randomly six times and didn't test anybody else, I suppose the parents at that point in time say, you're not harassing my student, you're checking him and nobody else, or her and nobody else. Without any suspicion, you know, what gives, you know, so I'm sure that at that point in time, you could have somebody contest it. But otherwise, yeah, if it was just a one-time check of some random selected athletes, it would be perfectly legal.
Julie got it right up here, so I'm waiting for it, but it's up here. Okay. So again, I apologize, we just got things this afternoon and my single-sided printer is not gonna be able to handle this at home. So here's what the actual quote all entails, it entails, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I hope you've been able to circle that. Okay, so does anybody have any other questions on the policy? Otherwise I'll entertain a motion to, so the second, we have approval. Motion to approve. I will second. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we'll go back to the air quality, Return to Learn Expenditure, summer.
Alright. Alright, so here's what you're getting. This first one is the one, this Atmos Air Rainier Summit, this is what I wanna put on the buses. This is what we have 26 of. Six again going to Haven. This model is typically used for spaces up to that 800 square feet and that's why, to utilize these, say in the weight room, wrestling room. You're really bad enough, I didn't even notice that it's way there. Is the point, this, there's other models out there, what I like about this one is it kind of seats and destroys. So the hope is that on, say our buses, on some of those areas, that we can just control. It's to improve the air quality, it's to go in and attack the viruses and bacteria. Again, I can't say with 100% certainty, but it's certainly another layer, especially in those areas like our buses. Now, what's going into our HVAC systems in those bigger rooms is this Atmos Air. And this goes right into those air handlers and that's for the bigger spaces. So this will be for, again, the weight room, that sort of thing. And it just has a little bit more power associated with it. It has, it works in a bigger, bigger area. I don't know what information you want me to share that's not on there. Some of it is in Lingo that I don't necessarily understand. But again, it's mounted right into that supply duct, in our case, that's the air handler. So when our air handlers are on, when the air handlers are running, it goes through this to help clean that air. So the only building right now over here, we will put it in during the day would be the music room. But keep in mind, we have 20 on buses. So if we figure, determine other areas that we think would be good, or we want to put it in, say a teacher's lounge, somewhere where people tend to be at more often, or just any areas in the nurse's office. We know for sure we'll put these from the buses into the isolation rooms, which the isolation rooms are designated areas where students go with a present symptoms. And then these will just be installed into those air handlers. So I apologize again, I didn't get this till this afternoon, only because I was still trying to decide what those manageable areas were. He, I really, I was really sold on the ones on the buses and then I knew I needed something more for those areas and this to me was the best option. They do do a source law contract, so we do not need to offer bits in that kind of part, even though it's over that limit. Again, I can't promise I will get a GERS grant for this, but I think we would have a decent opportunity to. And we would utilize the rest of our estimate unless I have, I have to sell this week, I have a mask. What, I don't know what questions you have specifically. That very first page shows the total of the 69, 839.
So are we talking 26 total?
26 total of the small ones.
Okay.
And then, and those are the standalone units that just get mounted. And 20 will be for us, so keep in mind about 8,000 of this will get paid for by Haven. So we would be right at that 60. So we would have 20 for our buses and for, say, the isolation rooms and things during the day. And then the rest of that is for those bigger areas that are just, it will improve. The thing I like about those areas, that's where when we talked earlier about, you know, the locker rooms smell, the bathrooms smell, the music rooms during flu season, it won't hurt having those in those areas anyway. So it's not just a purchase just for the COVID pandemic, it will help, it will help disinfect those areas, right?
Yeah, where we're going now, I'm just, I'm sorry. Yeah. First one, right?
Yeah, when I started looking at what I could do, I was like, well, this isn't what I have.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments on John's control of the whole?
What's 73?
Would pay be for Haven, so about 60 for us. 61. reminder, go with the whole. Jake did roll in. One additional thing that he feels that it costs, and he kinda wants to try out, so. He's a theater star, right?
And the buses, am I correct, are we going to talk about sanitation system extra, the system that must be sprayed out, or is that not a?
I don't have that.
Alright. That's what I'm wondering, I mean, that's what I said, you know, when that came out, I just didn't know that was, you know, which, I guess, I'm trying to figure out, if we go on this one today and next week, we're like, oh man, we should go up the spray sanitation on the buses, then we're gonna have to commit here, so.
And I just, I, my recommendation is this over that, but disagree with me.
No, I, I was.
I could be, leave me alone.
I already expressed my concern over summer report, the meeting that I thought won or the other.
Right.
And she was, I mean, the supervisor council, I guess, yeah. We can, if we wanna go one step farther, we can do a sanitation, so some of.
My question would be, in the absence of coronavirus, would we be considering this?
On the buses, I don't think so. In the other areas, yes. The 20 devices, the 20, the first 20, I would have to say no, which is why I would apply for the GERS money, which is over those, if anything, that we're purchasing outside of our normal budget.
What's our due time on this and what do we apply for the grant?
Well, the grant was supposed to be out in June. And that's the problem, is I couldn't apply for it yet because it's not out unfortunately. But there's a very chunk of money for schools. And we still have some of our CARES money left, there's not much. If you remember, we, 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 we were paying for the interventionist out of the CARES money, the original S money, which really it's, it's a educational expenditure. It's not, it, it's hard for me to not be purchasing things like this with that money because it kind of was like we wanted, we did the budget thing and said, well, we lost head of money, so we'll use that S money to pay for the title teacher. Well, not really what the title, the S money was for, it was for things like this, to protect kids and students and to make the incoming return to learn easier and better for students. But we don't wanna give up that interventionist, so, but that took $60,000 of my money that, for these sort of things. So I am, I'm a little ahead.
So is the request that we get the GERS money, but then we purchase this or we're gonna purchase this, whether we get GERS money or not?
I would like to purchase it, whether we have GERS money or not. At least, at least the areas that for sure we would, I would like to have regarded. Because schools are putting in those, I think the buses is thinking outside of the box a little bit. Um, but if I could at least get the areas, the spaces, the second piece of it. Um, regardless, that would be my preference, the ones that go through the air handlers for the wrestling rooms, the locker rooms, choir rooms, um, and then we would have been able to try for, um, try for the less one. If I had the right organization, do not give it all, say.
These would be capital out, like, if we don't get the year's money, it will not come out of education awards.
Yeah, yeah, um, and we do have a, you could, um, we are saying okay because I, we did do a couple projects last year because of COVID. So some games weren't done that were already budgeted out, so we had that from now, and then we'll look for it.
So what's the plan? I think it's twenty that could be important logistic-wise, timing-wise. They're on a bus at seven o'clock in the morning, uh, night before, and then the bus who's enrolled in eight o'clock, eight fifteen in the morning. Um, and to get them in the buildings, would they officially get, are we getting them back in by mid-morning? And hold them back up in the afternoon?
I, I think most realistically what we're looking at for the buses, it would be the activity buses more than anything. That you would be moving your row.
Not the row buses, what happens?
You just keep them. Right, the row buses, you, you wouldn't probably, it's not real practical on moving them out.
All right, there was no question. That wasn't what's proposed as when you're moving buses that could be on.
And they, and they can be, but yeah, not.
But that didn't exactly, it was set in.
Right, but you got, you've got activity buses, except for in the springtime. Um, they're largely set, but in the springtime you have track or Fridays when you have football, where there's several buses out that you have to do without in certain areas, but largely throughout the week, those buses sit, so.
You know, I, I'm hearing a little bit of hesitation, um, and then also the bringing up of that, you know, what we got with some of the new fogger disinfector things for the buses.
That's a little bit better.
Yeah, well, that's what, but what I, what I'm thinking is, um, you know, if, if I could prioritize anything, if I could, no matter how good, you know, maybe we, maybe although it'd be probably better to bundle it, if we, if we're just a little bit hesitant on that thinking outside the box piece with those, those filters in on the buses. If we're tonight, you approved the ones for the, the rooms that I just really, you know, that they come out of the air handlers and we wait on the bus, and we just really analyze that, um, deep fogger, the deep disinfector kind of bus, excuse me, a little bit more so that I can answer that question for sure, that I feel like these are better than that. Because honestly, that came out this week, end of last week, and, you know, I haven't went into it. Maybe as, as that still determines I should have to be able to answer that this is better. I kind of landed on this. I don't see anything any better for that wrestling room, choir room, last sort of thing. So maybe we just split up the purchase and we hold off on the twenty. Um, and then if I still feel like after talking with the transportation committee that that's still our best bet, we might have to have them at the beginning of school year. Um, but we, I would be able to answer that question and maybe help that hesitation that's even maybe in that month, which is that kind of a question.
Well, I think the biggest thing would be to have them before winter. I mean, at least the beginning of school year.
We, to keep, the suggestion is to keep the windows down, so we have a little big over there to keep the windows down. And then really study that, that stuff that came out from Forman Boston, just the end of last week, but I brought it on to you guys. Um, I would be, I would be comfortable with that.
One of the maybe consideration of our isolation rooms, that we're going to be, who would want to put something like this in the isolation room where we've got potentially sick kids and waiting for parents to-
And that was, um, that was part of the twenty. Um, and so, and, and they're little, so it might be that we, uh, you know, we do the big ones and then add three thousand dollars to that for the isolation room. Because that's at least smaller units, we're really for areas like those small isolation rooms.
Just to consider what you guys got.
Yeah, agree.
So how many are we talking about for the isolation room's grant? How many would we be talking about in addition to the?
I just, uh, you're talking square footage. Really what I've got vision for the isolation room for middle of high is, uh, the room just to the west of our office. You know, we looked at the, the, the area of bus and we figured that that was four, and it was like points of what was needed for a bus. I would think that it would be pretty close for that.
So you're talking just one room?
For middle of high right now, yeah.
Okay, so you, you, you want one additional, one device basically?
I, I'm thinking, well, it, it depends on the elementary. I would be looking, I would be wanting just to pull that room.
Right.
Again, I don't know if it's the right answer or not, but.
Right.
I know we've been putting Irish kids in that, in that room, you know, but if, if we put somebody in such a point, even at that,
Yep.
it might make sense.
What are you looking at in the elementary school?
As our isolation room, um, we have a conference room, that's at the end of this hallway, that is one option that I would be looking at, so.
So then you probably want something like that at the end there?
Right.
Okay, so we're looking at two, two of the smaller devices in addition to.
Which I can figure, I can have it, figure that separately then. So before the isolation rooms were, were to about forty, forty-one thousand?
Before.
Before, so then it's give or take eleven hundred dollars.
I guess I just don't know. Of the efficacy of this to, I guess, you probably say, yeah, we should, we should spend forty thousand dollars because, A, I, again, I'd like to see when this administrator produce some sort of evidence that says, yes, this is effective in killing viruses and bacteria that's not from their company, I guess, sorry, that's not done by them. Or whoever has that kind of information.
Well, you were giving us quite a bit when you came and presented it originally to the, the, um, facility committee, but I didn't. I, I didn't, so I didn't, I didn't get it, I didn't try to get it.
Sorry, I guess I already swung.
All that's my head.
Take mine.
This is, this, there's too many things coming out that sound great theory and, and I don't want, and yes, we have it, I mean, it's important. And I don't want to throw that, and then three months later, we're like, wow, we really should have that forty grand back. And that, that would be the best decision, the best educated decision, which, which I think we should.
I'd say we have some time.
What we don't have, um, is the choir, um, uh, the choir research is really pushing the, for the vocal and instrumental music, the pepper filters, which was just a little bit better, um, so.
So that would be, I mean, I would have a focus, but kind of nice to see, like, what, how would they, what they're pressing, or is it, sorry?
Is there a way I could get, you know, the facility committee, because by way to August tenth, I'm not going to have a choir event or something, I know, like Robert Michael shared some, some research on it. Um, and we, we really, you know, really pushing it. But if I could get a committee together that you would feel comfortable saying, yeah, your name, once I could provide all of you it, and then you could ask them your questions here in this next week, um, that I could at least get, you know, the, the wrestling room or the weight room. We're not utilizing those as much. I, most, and the, the buses, I can get the windows down, but I, if I'm going to get you convinced to do something in the music rooms, if we could get a group in to really study that with me this week, to answer some of those questions everybody has, that would be wonderful. And provide that committee the authority to act on for those rooms, and, and those rooms would be much smaller, yeah, yeah. Uh, and if you took out the weight room, that sort of thing, and just focus on the music rooms for now, and he had, he thought he could even have whose band, the fine arts posters were committed to helping, which I said I, I didn't think was necessary because we had this money. So if I could provide you that information and get the facility committee to even look at it, um, personally, I don't know that we have the need, basically.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to have Sarah bring it, um, other than, I think tomorrow morning, three, well, three.
I'm going to give the other to some higher school families, I probably didn't compare it well enough, but I would be like this, so.
Okay, does the board feel okay with that, letting the facilities committee go forward? Okay, so then I guess we'll just table this until the next meeting.
And anything that I just get, I will make sure to send it to everybody. Because I know I, I, it's just, um.
I just want to know what motion to that.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to table this.
A motion, you have to, maybe, oh. Make that recommendation or empower that committee on presentation, yeah.
And then the transportation.
Right.
And I think the transportation one we can wait on because, um, like you say, we have the luxury of the outdoor meter. Um, and so I'll still give you guys the stuff on the, those greatest factor and whatnot, and we'll act forward on that, you know.
So we just made a motion to, um, authorize the facilities committee to make a purged on these after reviewing more information. Did you second that, okay? Uh, motions been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, aye. Motion passes. So then we're going to table this for the next meeting, and it would just be a motion to for the chair. Motion's been made and seconded to the chair, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, aye. Motion passed by our chair.